I'd like to call this meeting to the Board of Education to order. Chris, could you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Detzel.
Here.
Mr. Engel.
Here.
Mr. Yoshimura.
Here.
Mr. Gilbert.
Here.
Mr. Detzel.
Here.
Would you all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Everyone has received a copy of the regular meeting minutes from the August 13 meeting. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Are there any additions or corrections? Okay, Chris. Motion passed, five to zero. Okay, Joe, do we have a legislative update?
There is no legislative update.
Okay. Jim, how about a Butler Tech update?
The only thing I have is just you guys will be getting invitations for the all-boards meeting up at DeRussel Lee on October the 9th. That's from 5:00 to 8:00. And what that is, is all the school districts that belong to Butler Tech, there's 10 of them, that we, the board members, superintendents, treasurers will get together and have a board meeting just for all the boards, just to see what's going on at Butler Tech and have a presentation of all the programs. So that's what that is.
And the ribbon cutting went well?
Yeah, we had ribbon cutting at the LaSorresville campus, the adult education. That was just last Wednesday, and everything went well, and it looks great.
Okay, at this time, we'll move into reports from employee, boy, I can't talk tonight, organizations. Do we have any from certificated and licensed employees? How about classified employees? Would you like to come on out? Brenda and Tracy, Transportation.
Good evening. I'm Tracy Keller. I'm the president of Opsy Local 230, the Transportation Department.
I'm Brenda Bright. I'm the former vice president of Opsy.
Yep, just wanted to let you guys know, well, it's official. The worst beginning to a start of a new school year in my 29 years of driving a school bus. And my coworkers will tell you they feel the same way. Why has Northwest administrators sacrificed children's safety on the pretense of saving money? There is no way money is being saved when buses are going around in circles, going from the far north end of the district to the far south end of the district, and then there are, then there are not allowing us drivers to do turnarounds any longer. Don't understand this because of a few accidents, taking out mailboxes, or a rock, or a tree. That's minimal compared to what the amount will cost if we lose a child or take out a bus stop of children. Bringing children out of their neighborhoods to busy roads for their bus stops to prevent drivers from doing turnarounds? Is it worth that risk? Now with the public's outcry, some of the bus stops have been changed. I kind of think what you do for one, you should do for all. Change all the bus stops, take it back to the way it was, for safety reasons. Routes that had been established for years have totally been dismantled. They were running efficiently and effectively, and rebuilt from scratch. What was the reason for this? We understand the need to make adjustments for the new elementaries, but not every established route had to be tore apart. Those routes, the routes not traveling to the new schools were working just fine. As the saying goes, if it's not broke, you don't fix it. Then there's a new software program that was put into place that made it dangerous for some of our students. For example, the program was put children out where they, at bus stops where they were to cross three or four lanes of traffic. We have buses traveling down hills that had been prohibited for years. That software program didn't pick all that stuff up. Children were placed at bus stops not closest to the residence. Bob, you were in transportation for 20 years. You were involved in redistricting. Did you, did you get asked, or did you have any decision in this stuff?
No, this was not brought to the board's attention.
Well, we have three tiers of routes. Now, we have to travel back-to-back. There's no time, no cushion time, no layover time, no anything. So if a bus breaks down, or if there's traffic jam, or a car wreck, and winter's right around the corner, we're stuck. It's going to throw the other two schools out of whack. Another thing is, we can't lay over closest to our first pickups any longer, where like we used to in parking lots, like CBS, or, you know, McDonald's, or whatever. We're not allowed to do that. We've got to stay on school property. And that hinders us in a timely manner, since we're going back-to-back, to get to those stops in a timely manner.
Tracy, are other departments able to do that, like go between a route like the CBS or McDonald's and the parking lot?
Yeah, you can see Peterman even doing it.
Okay, yeah, I'm just curious on that.
Well, that's why it's done, is because it's closest to your next pickup in the morning. So you're not fighting traffic. When this software program started doing the routes, or whoever was putting them in, they put us right through all the high school traffic. So guess what? The first couple of days of school, us drivers had to go in and say, "This isn't working. We have to reroute," you know, because we're getting late. And actually, St. I, some of the drivers aren't getting in until after 4:00, the St. I's, and then they're making phone calls to parents, because that's their...
What time does St. I's get out?
3:30.
And they're not picking up until 4:00?
They won't, they are not even getting in until 4:00.
Right. Because of the routes.
Because the routes have been made longer, and we're going farther distances, you know? And we're circling, we're doing circles. It just, it doesn't make sense. Okay, here's one for you, Jim. I have a granddaughter at OLG. She lives five minutes from, from the school. She's on a bus. Takes her close to 45 minutes to an hour to get home, because of all the roundabout. And you know why that is? They've taken buses out of the parochial schools. And my feeling is, is a taxpayer and a grandparent catering to the public schoolchildren. Sorry, that's how some people are feeling. So at this point in time, total fail. Total fail.
Trace, can I ask you something? Can we just back up a little bit on these turnarounds? You have never had a child endangered at all with these turnarounds?
No, because law says you have to have them on the bus before you turn around, and you have to do a turnaround before you let them off the bus.
Are you trained for turnarounds?
Yes.
Okay.
It's part of our job.
You know, I was, I guess there were some people who were fearful that because of the turnarounds, there would be accidents, and things like that.
Always are going to get a mailbox here or there. Here's a kicker for you.
Well, that's better than a kid.
My route, my route, I'm turning around at spring-down current, which I was trained to do close to three decades ago, okay? And then years ago, we would go down current. It's not even a circle, okay?
Why are they getting, eliminating turnarounds?
I have no clue.
Would that be, would that expedite the travel time?
Yes.
And safety?
Yeah. But getting back to current, it's not even a full circle. So there is a bus going down there. We used to have a driveway that we had permission to turn around in. They took that away. So now you have a bus going down there, not even a circle, back and forth, and back and forth, and chances are, they're going to hit a mailbox, or take out a tree, or a rock.
Who took that away, back in the...
The owners complained about two, three years ago. And that stopped. So, go ahead, Brenda.
I just want to give you a definition. The definition of neglect is failed to care for properly, not pay proper attention to, disregard, not attend to, be remiss about, shirk, be lax about, leave undone, ignore, fail to do something. As a department, we have been very neglectful. But I wanted to let the board know that that is not the drivers. We do not take any responsibility for the neglect that we're talking about. Just a few things. We were talking about the routes. I want to talk specifically about preschool. How many on the board have grandchildren three or four years of age?
Just on three.
Okay. Well, I haul three-year-olds and four-year-olds to Houston. I was told at the beginning of the year that I was going to do that without an aide on my bus. Now, these are not only three- and four-year-olds, but they're three- and four-year-olds with special needs. Now, that would require me stopping at stops, leaving my bus running with my lights engaged, getting up out of the driver's seat, leaving that front door unattended. Anybody could get on that bus at that point. And go unbuckle three- and four-year-olds, get them off to their stop, and then continue on. I was asked to write a letter of complaint about that, which I did. But my response when I was asked to do that is, "Why should I do that? Shouldn't my safety concerns be your safety concerns?" And, you know, these are things that you guys don't hear about.
Why don't you have an aide for three years?
We do now, because I wrote a letter.
I have a question. So, do you have an outlet, like a staff meeting, where you can speak to anybody in Sharon's?
Well, we have brought concerns prior to the start of the school year, and those issues could not be addressed at that time. So, we have made do. Some things were addressed, but a lot of issues with the transportation could have and should have been addressed prior to the start of school, but there were so many issues, it just wasn't feasible. And for six months prior to August, all we heard was, "This year is going to be different. This year is going to be different." Well, you know what? It was. And shame on me for believing that that was going to be better, but it was not better.
Do you feel, and I know it's been horrible, do you feel there's been any changes, positive changes, has happened? Because obviously, some of these things should have been figured out ahead of time, weren't figured out now, so are they being dealt with, or are they not?
Well, sometimes drivers take in their concerns and are told, "No, we're not fixing it," until the driver says, "Then put your signature on this route sheet, and you're going to accept liability."
Like, you know, we had buses routed down North Bend, okay? All of you are familiar with our district. That's four lanes of traffic. State law, we do not cross children on four lanes of traffic. Only the traffic following the bus has to stop. They were crossing children across North Bend. That should not happen. These administrators, all but Dan, which he's, you know, gets a pass, you know, they're supposed to be transportation people. Are we not checking our work? Or how is that happening? If it's a computer thing, then the computer needs to be fixed. If it's user error, then the user needs to be fixed. I mean, I don't know how to say it any plainer, but then the other issue becomes, today was payday. A lot of people live paycheck to paycheck. And when that paycheck is incorrect, it can cause a financial hardship. You know, we've cut mid-days in this district, and, you know, nobody, they were disappointed that mid-days, but they understand the reason behind that and everything. But then to get your paycheck after your mid-day's been cut, and then your pay still is not right, and I know personally, I brought it to people's attention at PIC Day and prior to PIC Day. Bob, I'll ask you something. If you can remember, pay on our strips. When we, say I just had St. James, and had to come in for St. James, what would my pay be for that day?
Not sure how we figured that. Did we figure it by the exact time?
No, we did an hour allotted for each AM, PM.
Right, yeah.
So the half hour.
And then our half hour to prep our bus, and clean up, and fuel, and everything.
Yeah, that's correct.
So on just a parochial that we had to come in for, with just one parochial, we would get two hours and 30 minutes, which some may go over that. Some may go a little bit under, but that's not going to happen too often, because, you know, it's going to take you 15 minutes to get to St. James from the lot, 15 minutes to get back, then if you have to get there and prep your bus, and you know, you've already spent an hour, and you haven't even done the route yet, okay? Well, you know, a lot of the parochials, they're only allotting them the actual drive time for that. That is what's figured into our pay. And that's very disappointing for a lot of people, when, you know, when you sit down and you go over and say, "This is the way, you know, it has always been..."
And it's in the contract that way.
And then nothing's done about it. That could have all been things...
So you're saying that there's no travel time? There's just the actual bus driving?
Yes. And...
Didn't you, you guys though, just ratified the contract to agree to that? That pay?
No, that's been like that for a long time.
That has been...
When we went to those hours, remember how this summer, we tried to go back to Northwest schedule, so everybody would know how they got paid correctly? You don't remember that?
Yeah, I do, I do.
But no, they wanted to stick with paying by hours in every school. When you have all of those routes, and all of those people?
Right.
Human error. And we have a lot of human error when it comes to our paychecks.
Why is there problems with the paychecks? Why aren't we, is there, what's the problem?
Chris is in charge of paychecks in transportation.
The paychecks are calculated based on the strips. If the strip is incorrect, that is not payroll. So it's not paycheck's wrong, it may be the strips are incorrect. But the paychecks are calculated based on the strips.
Yeah. Were they on the strips that way? Did, I mean, did anyone see that when they got the strips?
We just got them like a couple of days ago.
Yeah.
We didn't get them at PIC Day.
And I just got mine today. I had to ask for it four times before I...
And some people haven't gotten their mid-days yet.
Yeah.
How many, how many checks were, have you heard from your, your folks there in transportation? How many people had checks that were off, out of whack?
I'd say the majority, Joe, right now.
We don't see everybody, but...
Percentage-wise, 85%?
Yeah. Has this been brought to...
I'd say at least 85%.
Okay.
Okay, hold on. Has this been brought to your attention?
No, this is, and again, it's based on the strip.
And who does the strip?
And the strips were given to us weeks ago.
Come out of the transportation department.
Everybody has talked to Dan about it, and he went higher up and says he hasn't gotten an answer yet, or information. We started with the proper channels. But I informed him, because part of the stuff she makes me do is run the PIC Day info, the pay. And so I ran a lot of them prior to PIC Day, and I informed administration that there was issues with it. One of them was addressed. One of the issues was, and Bob, you'll know what I mean when I say this, if I'm not saying it correctly, but if you have a public school, a parochial school, and a public school, you've got that parochial in the middle, the first run of those strips, if only the, if the parochial was out, was only paying you for the first and the third time slot. And you, you're here. I mean, you can't go do anything else.
Yeah, we always paid that all the way through, because where you go for a half an hour, 45 minutes.
And they should be. But that is correct.
But that was the first error.
But again, we take the strips and load them.
Right.
We don't create the strips.
Right.
So it's what we receive.
Right.
Right. But that was the first error that I pointed out to our supervisors, and that one was addressed immediately. But then the...
So it sounds like we need to go to whoever is in charge of making sure the person that does the strips is doing them correctly. Because if, if payroll is paying by whatever's on the strip, and that's what they're doing, and there's a problem with the strip, then who's ever doing the strip, we need to get that taken care of ASAP.
Right. It's not Amy's department, because she gets the, she gets the information from whoever gives it to her, and that's all she can put in.
And we understand that.
Right.
But when you go to your immediate supervisor, and they can't help you, you know, it's more frustrating when it takes two months, three months to get this ironed out, when...
Do you get a reason as to why they can't help you?
Probably because he doesn't know how. I don't know Todd. You know, I, I mean, Dan's not a transportation person. I mean, I'm not trying to be disrespectful or anything here, I'm just stating, but...
We have Chris, who is hired to direct work with him on these issues.
Right. But I think what he told me today was, he has not been able to reach Chris to discuss this with him.
Because pay, as you say, is very important. And when you do live paycheck to paycheck, plus you look at the rising cost of health insurance. It is very important that it's done correctly, and done quickly, get ready. So, we will start working on this tonight, but we will also get on a first thing in the morning, and I'll get with Chris, and we'll get with Dan and George, and we will get with you guys to gather your input, which is the most important piece. Another question I have is, I had talked to you guys over at Monford Heights, and I, I took your feedback, that routes were wrong, and expressed to Chris that they were wrong, and that the drivers needed each be called in and talked about the route, so we could make adjustments. Did that occur?
It is starting now. We have sign-ups in there coming.
So is it a lack of union power that we have, that there's 85 drivers?
I thought it was only because George said if you needed your route changed. It wasn't to call in every driver to check.
Well, I think, I mean, the opportunity is there to go in.
And you brought this to my attention, which I then brought to Chris's attention, I believe the fifth day of school at Monford Heights, when we were all outside of the...
And I do want to thank you. That's the first time I've ever seen a superintendent show up at a school and talk to a bus driver. So, I mean, you know, thank you for that, yeah.
Well, the job you guys do is way too important, to have concerns and issues. I don't know where it came from, and I can speak for all of us, but at no time have words out of my mouth been to cut funds out of transportation. I'm not looking at cutting funds. We lost 1.4 in transportation because the state took their way. But I don't understand why there's a common theme of, "We're being told we're out of money, and we have to cut back." I don't understand where that's coming from.
Can I ask you a question? Why are we running our department suddenly like a private company, like Peterman does, and make all the children come out of neighborhoods and stand on busy roads, like Shibby at Road and Stockton?
I don't have all the answers to that. I think not having enough people to double-check what the computer spits out, because it's wrong. But I know the goal this year was to pick up more kids, because we wanted to do the opposite of what it sounds like, and we don't want anybody crossing Kemper Road. And we've had complaints for years, if you go down by Buell and Crest, there were kids having to cross the street, come up there, and that's not safe. So we wanted to eliminate that, pick up more kids. We wanted nobody crossing Kemper Road as you come over the PRE. We didn't want some of the streets and the hills down here from Monford Heights. So, the expectation was to bus more, but in order to bus more, we didn't want to make it unsafe. And if we have to add buses to clear that up, it'll take from our sub-pull, but kid safety is first. We've got to get more drivers, get them in here. If we have to change routes or add routes, all of that should be doable. So, that I've got to look into and see where all that's coming from. But again, the only cut I know about, and I've heard about, is we lost 1.4 from the state funding for transportation. But nowhere in our budget did we discuss, unless Amy, I'm incorrect, that we are cutting transportation.
We've not talked about cutting. We've talked about being more efficient, but we've not talked about cutting.
I have a question. Is this a new software? I mean, is this a brand-new soft, so we have, we have history with this?
Well, the problem is, is when I was here, about five years ago, we put in new maps. But then I was told that Chris purchased new maps since then. And the problem with that is, is there's nobody probably in that department at this point that has enough knowledge of the district, and enough knowledge of VersaTrans to make those maps work. Because they put the map in. They give you the map. But then you, as a user, have to go in and tell that, that map what to do. So in other words, you've got to tell that map that Brem Road on those hills is a no-travel zone. You have to tell them that Week Road is a no-travel zone, that you can't go up and down those hills, because they're too steep. But we got buses going up and down those hills, because I follow them.
So we have two people trained in transportation, Chris?
Correct. And then we also hired a person, a representative of VersaTrans to come in and work with those two people.
It took me a month when we put our maps in, when I was there, to get them, to get them programmed.
Can we relook at the no-turnaround?
We can look at anything and everything, is to the point. My update was going to be about this. As great as it was with opening new buildings, this has been a terrible experience. I would agree 100% with you.
Yeah, I think it overshadowed the new buildings, I do.
Correct, it did.
With all the social media, and that shouldn't have happened.
I don't, I don't know how we got to this, but I can tell you tomorrow morning, I'll personally start digging into it to see how we got to this. And we've got to make changes in collaboration with you, and not against you. You should never have to tell a supervisor to sign a sheet of paper if you're not going to change a stop. That is absolutely 100% unacceptable, and we don't want that to occur. I agree with you 100%.
You know what we felt like the first couple of days of school? You guys sat us in front of a firing squad. An angry community. And there's still parents out there that are angry, and still trying to fight for their bus stops to be changed.
And you know, and I kind of felt the same way when I said bus passes would go out on the 8th, and they did not. So I think we've all felt that.
You know, with the turnarounds in it, and obviously, you guys maybe hit a mailbox, what are the claims, how many, how much claims did we pay out last year?
Well, you got the sheet, Jim.
Yeah, I know, I don't, I don't pay it.
There was four, there was four, there was four things out of those 50 odd things that had to do with a bus turning around to pick up students.
Right, and that's what I was...
And that's on a five-year period.
Yeah, and...
But that doesn't show all the maintenance calls that we make, to fix mailboxes.
Sure.
And to fix trees, or to fix a tire that went up in somebody's yard. There's probably, on a bad year, probably 20 to 25 of those, on a good year, 10 to 15.
And with all the driving that we do, that's really not, that's really not...
And we're doing even more driving this year.
I know.
From one end of the district to the next.
That was my point with the amount of driving that you do and the miles that you, yeah.
You're going to have some claims.
You're going to have claims. I'm in the insurance business, I know. I know it frontwards and backwards, and that's what, it doesn't seem like it's really that much. I mean, it's pretty minor.
Some of those tire tracks are not ours. We could debate that, because there's Paul's buses, and we caught them one time. We were playing for it, and it was Paul's or...
I think what we lose sight of is, we transport over 6,000 kids, and we have 85 buses, and some of that is going to happen. And there's a big difference between trying to be efficient and making cuts. And we're too close to making cuts instead of doing what's right. And that's the part we need to fix.
Well, what I'd like to say is, this, this piece of the meeting is always here. I don't want you ever, any of you, to feel like you have to say to me ahead of time, there's not going to be any repercussions, are there? Because you are part of us. We, this, as bad as all this is, if this has come out of it, where we have this dialogue, and you feel comfortable enough to come straight to us, that is a good thing. There's a reason that on our agenda, every meeting, I say, "Is there anybody certificated or licensed?" Never anybody comes. Classified, every once in a while. This, this is how, how we find things out. Yes, you go to the chain of command, but it sounds like you had a lot of suggestions prior to this that could have helped this. So I appreciate that you're here with this. I am so sorry you're going through what you're going through. I hate the fact that you had to write a letter, but as a grandparent of a newly-turned-three-year-old, thank you for writing it. You should have never had to have, in my opinion. That's just common sense to have an aide on the bus with that. But we're going to get through this, we're going to get this figured out, and I promise next year, it's not going to be anything like this year.
We heard that last year, Pam.
I didn't say it.
Brenda, Tracy, please let us know, the board, if there are any kind of retribution, or any kind of negative comments made to you guys, as the bus drivers making, you know, simple demands like a turnaround, getting our checks right... getting our checks right, getting the strips correct, things like that. It shouldn't happen, but if it does, we want to hear about it.
Thank you for listening.
Yeah, thank you.
I'll also start attending your monthly meetings with Chris and Dan. So I'll be in attendance at all of them from, for the next four years.
You bring it down, right?
I will.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Is this appropriate? I'm Karen.
You act.
She just walked in.
I, I know, but we, if, if we do this at the meeting, what we can do is typically you fill out a card. Do me a favor. It's coming up. Tracy, I'll grab you a card real quick. Just jot it down and bring it up to me. And when we get to the, the community communications, then I'll be glad to add you on to the agenda. We just, it, we don't have it at this. No, it's not at the end. It's, it's in just a little bit. Okay. Okay, now we move on. Are there any reports for school-related organizations? At this time, I have requests from four, soon to be five, looks like six. Community comments, so I'm going to go in order, so they'll have plenty of time to fill out the card. The first one is Bonita Sargent, school bus, parking lot, safety, and code of conduct. Conduct. Boy, I cannot talk tonight. I am. I think it's.
First of all, I want to thank that gentleman, Darryl, is that your name? For allowing time last meeting, come speak to me privately because I missed the board meeting. One of the questions I asked him was, how are you going to tell me as a grandparent that my grandchildren are safe in the school? Not by bringing guns in. That's not what him and I discussed. It was once they were in the school, the safety. He assured me that the schools are doing everything they can. Well, I'm here to tell you that constantly from White Oak Middle School and Colrain High School, not just on social media, people coming and talking at Panera Bread, at McDonald's. There are things going on in these schools that are not being addressed. I don't know if the board members know. I'm kind of, I was kind of flavor guessed it when those two ladies were up here. And you both, all of the board members said, oh, we didn't know about that. Well, as a community taxpayer, that is your job. That is why I voted for you. I voted for you to be a board member, and you're supposed to be up here. You're supposed to know all this. And if you don't know all this, then you're not really doing your job. As a businessperson, when we ran a business, we would run stuff up the pole to the people in the white ivory towers. They couldn't come out to the public and say, oh, well, we didn't know, oh, we don't know about that. But that's part of your job. And what Todd said, is that your name? I can't see Todd.
Yes.
At least he's taken on the responsibility and saying, yeah, we screwed up. The biggest thing that I'm going to complain about is not you guys, but who made the decision to cross out the road and block it off to go to Struble from John Rose off of Colrain? Was it the township? That's who made that decision? So you, as board members, never got to go to the township and say, hey, wait a minute, stop. We're building a $25 million new school back there. And if you block that road and you can only come in banning the memory down to John Rose, that might cause a problem. None of you had that insight, right?
We did do that.
We did do that. And if you want to get me started, not only that, but we have to pay for the turn lane that's coming, the school district, and we got the township to agree to pay part of it. CMHA, who built the housing project, didn't pay a penny of it. And I know I'm not supposed to say any of that, but.
Oh, I want you to say it all.
Trust me. We fought hard and, and loud about all that. And I'm going to back up as far as, I'm not sure what any of us said that we didn't know about transportation because we've been getting flooded with phone calls and emails.
It was that gentleman sitting next to you. When she, when one of them two ladies said something, he goes, oh, we didn't know about that. I don't know what she said, but.
Because I can just say, as a board, we, we have all answered emails. We've, we've had constant conversations of what's going on. So we're very, we might not know everything they shared tonight. I'm glad they did, but we're certainly aware there's a lot of issues. But getting back to the other, that was taken out of our hands.
So is that, was that Ritter and Enderhees? Because they're gone. So who made that decision? Because two years ago, when Struble, on October 31st, when Struble was going to have their costume Halloween thing, all the parents found out, oh, there's main construction starting today. So who made that decision? Why wasn't that decision based on school safety? You're having kids coming out in Halloween costume, 50 parents, 100 parents trying to watch them. And the, and you couldn't hold it up one day? So somebody in the school board made that decision. Who, who agreed with the contractor, we're going to start on this day, October 31st? Those are the kind of things, as a community member, I'm like, what are you guys thinking? I don't understand how you plan a project and look at the school and say, okay, yeah, that's Halloween. We're going to start construction on that day and block off all the parking lots and do all this constructions. And so what? We had to do it. Those are the kind of things, as a community, that we're out there complaining about. And then you knew these new schools were going to have all these new kids crisscrossing, doing all this $25 million, three new schools. And then you're planning. What did you plan from a year ago, six months ago? How, how did you think of this plan to get these kids all bussed? Like she was saying, how, how did you come up with that plan? That's what I don't understand. How can all of you who are on the board, who we voted for, to be the top people who are, we're saying, okay, these people are the top people? How do you sit down and look at a project and say, okay, here's this road, here's this school, here's this road, we're going to take these kids out of Colrain Elementary. We're going to take these kids, we're going to move these kids. But, um, well, let's see, crossing four lanes of highway? Oh, we just didn't think of that. All the computer was supposed to think of that.
Well, first of all, I'm going to interrupt you and let you know the job of the five board members, our number one job is to hire the superintendent and the treasurer.
Okay.
We do not micromanage, and we do not tell any of these people what to do in their job. We hire the two people. We entrust them to hire and put the right people in place. We are not sit, this five of us are not sitting there in meetings and designing maps or anything else. We certainly trust who we put in charge. And I, obviously, there's been issues and, but as you can see, I mean, we have a superintendent that as soon as he finds out there's an issue, he will say, there's a problem, and I'm going to be there, and so on and so forth. So this part of it to just kind of attack the five of us, that, that is not our job. It is not our job to look over anybody's shoulders and tell them how to do their jobs. That, that, that isn't what we're here to do.
Okay, so who do we go to, to talk to, who had this plan? Who knew this school was going to be built? Who were the members, if it weren't you five, and, and it wasn't really Todd? Who was the persons that thought this plan, that this was going to work?
We had several board meetings where the plan was presented. We had several board meetings where it was discussed whether the school would stay on that site because Colrain Township decided to close John Rose. If you want to know why they closed it, they caused it, they closed it because of high crime and drugs. If you go to the CMHA ribbon cutting they had last Friday, which I attended, probably out of the 16 speakers, 14 mentioned that they were glad to see all the crime and the drugs out of this area. That's why they closed it. We had problems with cars going in and out of Struble for two days. I personally directed traffic because of prior complaints on day three. And since, traffic has moved fine. Tardies are not occurring. What happened the first two days of school is parents got excited. They wanted to get their kid out of the car, stand him on the sidewalk, take their picture, and walk him to the door while leaving their car parked, blocking everything else. P R E was a prime example. We had 160 cars deliver the first two days. After that, we averaged about 80 a day. So after that newness got over, and some of that was, our bus pass was wrong. So I'm not trusting the buses where they're going to pick us up anyway. But the plans for where the school go and how it works was all planned out. We had community meetings on it. We had Robert Martin at plenty of these meetings. Every time we tried to look at new property to place the school somewhere else, he and community members from Struble stood up loudly and said they did not want it to go anywhere else. And, and now when you talk to them, it's raised their property value. The traffic flow is going fine. We have an agreement with CMHA where the buses go out there. And we are expanding Banning Road. It's a $700,000 project of which we're paying 350. Colrain Township is paying 350. As far as the Versa-Trans and the routes, that's a whole separate issue. The bus, these five don't micromanage that either. But there are major problems we have to fix, and we will fix them.
Okay, because I, I would like just to know who, who sat down as a, as a project manager. When you sit down with a project manager, you sit down with your team members. I want to know who, if it wasn't anybody, any of you, then who was that?
Which part of the project are you asking about?
Who decided, what people came out of what schools and how the buses were going to be rerouted?
The redistricting.
Yes.
The redistricting came from the A O team sitting here and out here in the audience. And we redistrict. Bob was on our committee also.
We did have a representative.
And we had a board representative. And we looked at where we could move neighborhoods so you wouldn't have kids across the street saying, well, I live across the street from Joey, my best friend. He goes to one elementary, I go to the other. We redistrict. It worked out perfect. We have 948 at one, we have 928 at the other, we have 918. So the numbers worked out fine. We're not changing every year. We have equal numbers. The redistricting part worked out right. Did it work out for transportation? No. But for kids going to school and getting to where they should go, it worked out great.
Okay, my second thing is paving Colrain High School. Who made that decision to do it after school started?
Chris, you want to comment on Colrain High School and paving?
It was based off of money that was left over during the project. So it's contingency money that came available. That was one of the projects that we wanted to do.
Okay, so why was it done so late? Because the money wasn't there till late?
Correct.
It wasn't, it wasn't available till the other three elementary schools were done.
Okay.
We were able to air, also air condition the district, make other changes because bids came in short. But when we came to our elementary schools, we had a list of things that we put in. We cut off the list, but when money popped up, we finished putting them in. And then with the extra over money, they had worked since last April and May to make arrangements on how traffic flow would go because of so many complaints from parents. And now the traffic flow is going very smoothly at Colrain High School. I drive it three out of five days a week.
Okay, I was, that was somebody who asked me to ask that at the board meeting. Why did they wait till school started? So now I know it was, the monies weren't available until then. Okay, my bus driver, and I guess everybody in the room is going to throw sticks at me now when I say this. The bus driver I have to deal with, why is she allowed to play rap music on the bus from 7:15 on with kindergarteners through 5th grade? My grandkids are coming home and telling me what the songs are saying, what the songs are playing. And it's, and why.
Have you reported it to the building principals?
I reported to them. I called and reported to.
And which principal was it, so I can address them personally?
Um, I think her name's Mrs. Hart, the one that's at Struble.
Grayson.
Miss Grayson?
Yeah. And then I called and left it on a voicemail. And then they directed me this morning to somebody who's in charge of transportation, to his voicemail.
Dan Bolden.
That's it.
And what bus number is it, ma'am?
69. And cursing to students while on bus and students, again, kindergarten through 5th grade, allowed to throw stuff across, they alter each other and curse each other out.
Well, we have cameras and videos on our buses. We'll be glad to check into that. And if it's verified, obviously, there will be some very stiff consequences.
Okay, thank you. And the code of behavior of, that all students are given.
Code of conduct?
Code of conduct, this one here. There's nothing in there about the bus driver, what the code of conduct is for them. It is for the bus, for the students, but nothing for the bus driver.
We have a classified employee's handbook that covers conduct.
Okay. And what, what are these rules, what, how are these rules applied? These code of conducts applied? Because what happened in the schools, the White Oak Middle School, the one I'm concerned about, sometimes in the high school, I'm being told these are not being enforced because the principals or the people there are afraid to enforce the codes. So why, why do we have the codes if they're not going to be enforced?
They should definitely be enforced.
We would have to know some specifics and facts, and I can have Mr. Karen get with you immediately and find out some things that you know, jot them down, and then he can contact the principal.
Okay. It's gang-related stuff? It's violence? It's not being addressed?
None of us want that either. I agree with you 100%.
Okay, thank you all very much.
Thank you. Okay, next is Debbie Pence on traffic, buses, and police assistance.
Hi, I'm Debbie Pence, and I'm your volunteer school guard at, I'm now at John Rose in memory. They've asked me to move down the street a little bit. But talking to my sheriff deputies the last couple of weeks, we've come up with, the schools need to put out a safety letter. And not just for the kids. It needs to be for the parents, too. Friday, I stood down at John Rose in memory, and I have never seen so many parents running the red light. They don't even look to see if there's kids getting ready to cross the street. Nothing. There, the two sheriffs are asking that we ask the parents, here's the crosswalk, and here's the solid line, until they get the new roads fixed. If they could maybe pull back just a hair further so the buses can turn better without trying to take out the telephone poles on either side. And Tracy, you know what I'm talking about. It's scary. In the safety letter, please ask the kids to walk their bikes across the street. Last week, I almost got knocked out with a bike. This, this morning, I am crossing to go back home. I held up the sign just for the heck of it. It said, stop. I'm crossing myself. And a woman turned and aimed her car right at me. And I was not a lady, and I apologized to the board. I threw my sign down, and I went, what? I mean, I had to stop. I am scared down there to cross those kids at John Rose in memory. I would like to request that you guys ask Colrain Township to put a police officer down there for a week or two, like you have up at, the sheriff up at Banning in memory, to catch these people. Our kids are at risk. The other school guard that's crossing down by the school, he's told me things. They don't really listen to us. And they need to be aware. Yeah, I'm a volunteer. I'm not an employee. I did this, started this out crossing my grandkids at Cross Banning in memory. And it just, the kids all felt safer, and I started crossing more kids and more kids. I had the bus drivers yelling at me because I didn't have a vest. I didn't have a sign. Everybody got me all this. I love the kids. I will risk my life to save these kids. But we need to make the parents more accountable.
I, I think, I think that's a great idea. And I think certainly, as all of us that are residents of Colrain Township, we certainly can request that, that they take the time to send a, a police officer. I know, I know there used to be a police officer at Pleasant Run Middle when my kids went there. And he wrote ticket after ticket for all of them that went through and were driving too fast in the school zone. So, I mean, you would hope to think one or two tickets. I mean, it's so hard to even believe that parents, and not hard to believe, but to understand why they're running the light or running the stop sign.
I had my phone ready to take pictures. I couldn't even get their license. They were going, whipping through there so fast today.
I, I would.
And Friday.
I would hope to think after a few of them getting tickets, that that would certainly stop things.
Couple of things we can do. They definitely will assist, and we'll put a call in. Secondly, we can have Trey and Karen have grade-level meetings with the kids if needed to talk about safety and revisit that. Where I was, they were walking them across, but it was because parents were with them. So I can only imagine what the kids are doing on their bikes near you. So we can address that also, because that's a safety issue.
It is. I mean, he went to avoid the kid, but he almost took me out.
Sure.
And I'm sorry to say this, but I had a car that I could feel the radiator on my backside. And now, one other little thing, it doesn't concern the traffic. I take my grandkids up in the evening up to Struble. And it would really be nice if we could put a couple of trash cans down by the playground area and maybe a bench or two. Ann Wagle has a couple down there at the, at the park. Maybe we could uproot them and put them around there. The ground's awful hard for 69 and a half-year-olds to get off.
It's not a problem whatsoever. We can take care of that.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for volunteering every day. We really appreciate it.
I want you all to know, I think you're doing fabulous.
Well, we appreciate all you do.
Okay, Monica Boiles, parking, safety concerns and solutions.
Hey, everybody. You guys probably all know who I am. All right, so I'm going to try to make this as quick as I can. I want to address a couple of issues. One was the parking situation at Pleasant Run Elementary. I think everybody is probably in agreement up here that there's, it's less than ideal. For those of you that are not familiar with P R E. For those of you that are not familiar with P R E, we basically have P R E and P R M which sit right next to each other. There's not a lot of parking for both of the schools. We have at P R E approximately nine hundred and fifteen students there currently. One of the major issues is around the side of the building where the basketball hoops are, it's the entrance to the cafeteria. There's about, I think there's four cafeteria doors. There is a playground right in front of the building, which is kind of just nestled in there. And it's right, it feeds right off the parking lot, so you're talking several feet between the, the area where the park, where the playground is and the, the doors to the school and the cafeteria. You right walk, you come off of that a few feet and you're in the parking lot. In the parking lot, there's a lot of writing. I'm sure those of you that have driven through there can probably relate to this, but you really can't tell where to park, where the kids play, where the buses line up. All of this is one, in one area. So what's happening is when people are driving through there, they don't know where to go, they don't know where to park, they don't take the time to figure it out. You have kids playing on this playground after school and, you know, you, you've got, it's a safety issue where these kids can get hit and hurt and killed. We just had a kid killed today, I forget that you all heard about, the ninth grader. This stuff is a huge concern for our students. I have a, I have an eight-year-old daughter who plays, she's a cheerleader and, and I have to pick her up and take her to cheerleading. And I have witnessed some of this stuff myself. I know a lot of these kids, I know a lot of people in the community. They have siblings, while they're at practice, they might have two or three other kids that are playing at the playground, all these kids are running around. There's, because there's inadequate parking, these cars are stopping in the middle of the lane when you come into the school and it's just a mess. It's a matter of time before one of these kids gets hurt and killed possibly.
What time of day are you talking about, Monica?
I'm talking, the time that I'm up there is after school, so you've got a couple of things happening. I don't know what they're doing at the middle school, I'm going to guess it's some kind of orchestra training or something, or program or practice.
Right, so P R E gets out, you're talking after school's out, after the parents and after the buses have left.
This is not during the school day.
Okay.
So you're talking anywhere between, I'd say, four and six-thirty-ish, up to eight o'clock at night. So, um, it's just bad, okay?
So you would like to see defined parking lines, so cars that were in the pull-in to pick kids up?
That's one of the things, Todd. So yes, but the bottom line is there's just not enough parking on the whole premise to have an all-school event. I'm sure a lot of you all have seen or were there for open house. I'm sure a lot of the administrators at the school would agree and parents that you cannot have, it's so bad up there that you can't have an all-school function. So what that means is if there's a, if there's a concert for the entire school, you can't have it. There's just not enough parking. For us with P T A, if we want to have, say, pumpkin night or whatever, you know, whatever event we want to have, we have to break them all up. And what that means for volunteering, which I'm sure you guys, you guys can all appreciate as volunteers, you know, instead of having one night of volunteers, now you got to have two. But now you got to have maybe forty people to volunteer instead of twenty. And it goes on and on and on. So, um, the other issue is even with the practices that I was telling you guys about between picking up the kids from Wise Kids, between, you know, the cheer practice, football practice, and A B C, whatever practice is going on at other schools. Even at those times of the day, there's not enough parking sometimes to accommodate that. And, you know, you're talking about a small portion of kids. So I, I have a lot of concerns around that. So in terms of solutions, I know, I know that this probably has been discussed in the past, but I really, really think that we need to think about having an access road from Hamilton Avenue to, to get to P R E. You're going to reduce that congestion on Pippin, hopefully, by doing that. You can have an access road up there main, so you're going to take all that congestion away from Pippin and from the middle school, hopefully give them some of their parking back. And the highest elevation that you have currently at P R E is at P R E currently, so you've got, I think, two more elevations beneath that where you hopefully can put some kind of parking in. Additional parking to meet the needs of the schools. And I know that there's some talk about some ball fields or something being built there at some point, but you guys are going to have to get some kind of parking in there, it's just not safe. I know that there had been talk about a two million dollar surplus in the, in the budget as far as the, the schools and the-
Two million dollar?
That's what you all had mentioned in a previous meeting, a couple of meetings ago. I've been out because I had surgery.
Two million dollar surplus?
But I don't know, it's probably gone. But I know that that was mentioned, I think, back in June or July meeting, it was, it was before I had my surgery, so I've been out for a few.
I, I don't ever recall hearing a two million dollar surplus.
Oh, I heard it, I heard it loud and clear.
Too, but that's-
But it's probably gone. I know the project managers were here.
From the-
Oh, from Pete Becker, gotcha.
Yeah. So I don't know if that money is still available, I know this is all going to come down to money, but I think that it's a safety issue and I certainly don't want to turn on the news and hear about somebody getting hurt or hit. So the other thing that I wanted to mention was with Wise Kids, I think there's been some issues. I think those of you who don't know what Wise Kids is, it's the after-school program. And there's, I, I myself have my own child in it after, not in the morning, but after. And one of the things that has been a problem is there's not like a buzzer system or something like that for you to get into that back cafeteria. I don't want to say too much because we're on TV about safety and are kind of weird about that, but I think we need some kind of, I don't know what that looks like, a key pass system or something where parents can buzz to get in. I know I have been waiting myself to get in there for ten minutes banging on the door to try to get into my kid. The cafeteria is, is rather large, so if you've got, say, forty kids in there and you've got one or two teachers, maybe one teacher is in where the gym is, the other one might be on the other side of the stage and she's dealing with the, we have a couple of kids that have special needs, one is in a wheelchair and whatnot, and so she's dealing with them, no one sees anybody at the door. Well, you're standing out there. I've also been out there myself and one of the Wise Kids instructors was out there with the kids in the playground right in front of the school and he couldn't even get into the school with the kids because they're saying it's a safety issue, it's a state regulation, et cetera, et cetera, because the doors have to remain locked. Understood, I get it, like it's a safety issue, understand all that too. Joe Schmo's coming in off the street and they drive down with a gun or God knows what, whatever's going on, no one can get in the building. That's a problem, that's a huge safety issue. So I just think we need to kind of wrap our around, our arms around that and start trying to find some solutions to some of those issues that are out there. So I just wanted to, to throw those issues out there and I, I mean, I proposed a few solutions. I don't know, I think that might be a starting point, but I think we need to really think about what we can do to, to bridge some of those gaps. One of the other, the other questions that I had for you guys, how many students are budgeted to attend P R E currently? Like, how many students and what's the cost per student in our budget? Do, does anybody know? I mean, if you don't have that tonight, then you can get it back to us in another meeting, but I was just kind of curious. And I was curious as to what the demographics are for all the elementary schools in the district. I believe, you guys can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that everything that's published right now is always in arrears, adhering arrears. So right now, like the demographics that would be published for now probably are from last year. But I'm just curious what those demographics are. I mean, I think, and I'm looking at advantage versus disadvantage, I think that's the, the lingo that the state uses, then obviously all the different racial makeups. And I would like to know how many students are currently at all of our elementary schools. And then I would also, my final question is to everybody, I was, it was brought to my attention by some parents that Taylor's school colors were changed. I guess the Northwest colors are blue and gold and then there's the, I believe, what is it, blue and red or whatever it is for Colrain. But those colors were changed at Taylor, so now is P R E the only school that has the blue and gold colors?
Taylor, or, P R E is the only school that has blue and gold. Struble is the only school that has the red and white. Taylor has kids that will go to both high school feeder systems.
And what about Montford Heights and what's the other one?
Montford Heights is all Colrain and Colrain L is all Colrain. Remember, Colrain High School has two thousand students, Northwest High School has one thousand.
Yeah, but I'm talking about the elementary schools.
Yes.
I'm just, because I don't, well, Colrain-
And Montford Heights is green.
I was just curious why that change was made. As we think about maybe trying to unify the district, I just, I was just curious because that has been, people have asked me and I'd like to give them an answer. And that's pretty much all I have for you guys for today.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, next is Carrie Davis on transportation. And I did, I just wanted to say typically in our board policy, we only allow thirty minutes for this time and we usually say three to five minutes. I've been real lenient because I think it's important that we hear everybody and their concerns. So I'm not putting a timer or anything on tonight, but if we can try to keep it a little bit. We still have four more because I've actually accepted three more.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, just a few things. I was wondering, first off, in the glass in the new buildings, is that security bulletproof glass?
No, it is not.
Is there any plans, I kind of thought with the incidents today, that our kids in that lobby were kind of sitting ducks because we got glass and it just concerned me that that wasn't the brightest decision.
Yeah, we have safety plans in place of which I'm not at liberty to discuss, but if-
No, I'm talking about the glass.
No, true, with the glass, we have places, we have things we can do to the glass, we have things we can put the kids in safe positions that we can go into lockdown in all of our buildings. But yes, the glass is not bulletproof, but there are plans in chase, in place that do certain things that I'd be glad to talk to you in private.
I think we should think about, maybe we need to put some bulletproof glass in there.
Did we price that, Chris?
We did price it, but that wasn't the main issue, is that bulletproof glass, actually bulletproof, bullet penetrant glass?
Sometimes. Yeah, sometimes it does, sometimes it actually stops. I haven't seen the holes in bulletproof glass. All depends on what kind of grade and how much you want to spend. But I don't know that in the future, we should consider glass schools. I don't think it's a good idea. I wanted to talk about our crossing guard, our volunteer crossing guard, there she is. You need to put her on the payroll, folks. When she's being called and asked to go somewhere and she's being given instructions by you all and when she's actually doing work that benefits you all and you know it, you need to put her on the payroll because if she gets hit by a car, she can sue you. If she's on the payroll, pay her ten bucks an hour, then she'll be covered under your workers' comp. And then you have more control of what's going on. So I don't, she's doing fabulous work, I think she deserves to be compensated, it's something needed and it's in your best interest liability-wise to get her on the payroll as a part-timer. That's just my opinion. Bus drivers, I used to be a bus driver for Cincinnati. I was concerned with some of the things in your contract back in my day and I'm pretty sure it's still true. If you have, if you show up for work, they have to pay you for three hours minimum, just for showing up. If, if they only use you for an hour unless you wrote it off in your contract, that's the federal labor law. You get paid for three hours just for walking in that door and it's very concerning what's going on with their pay. Also, ladies, when you have an error on your check, give it to them in writing. They have thirty days to correct it, if they do not do so, then they have to pay a penalty. So you will get compensated for having to wait more than thirty days. So just a little advice on that. There are turnarounds and stuff, but they're on the mark, they know exactly what's going on. I spoke with Amy Ferguson with the Cincinnati Metropolitan Housing Authority today. She hasn't heard from anybody from the school district whatsoever and I got the ball rolling for you that when you have situations where your parents are backed up, they may be willing to negotiate with you about opening the gates so cars can go through. I talked to her about us coming in one door and out the other. Todd has said that that problem seems to have resolved itself pretty well, awesome, but in the event that that's not completely accurate, C M H A is willing to talk to you. And the contract you have with them, you guys wrote that contract, they wrote the contract with C M H A, from what I-
That was the access to come in and out.
Yes, sir, that's what I'm talking about, the access. So whoever was doing that contract should have thought about the cars too as somebody was bringing up. So you were, you knew this was going to be a problem. So I think we missed the ball a little bit on that, but I pled with them to be good corporate citizens and how much we want them to be active community solution finders and to work with you guys to try to open that gate for cars to exit only. I said, maybe we need to throw a security guard back there at that time. But anyway, so her name is Amy Ferguson.
We already have contacts and we already had that agreement and we don't work where-
I know that-
We work with Reema and Joe and all those things were in place already.
Yeah, I know you already have the contract, I'm aware of that.
Now, where-
She said she has not been contacted whatsoever.
We wouldn't contact her, we'd contact Reema and Joe.
Okay.
That's our direct contact.
Well, and her supervisor, when she called me on my way here, she said she hadn't heard from you either.
Reema's not our supervisor, but thank you, we will take care of it.
I didn't say her name because her name wasn't Reba, I didn't say that.
Okay, we'll, we'll go ahead and move on.
Okay, so the last thing I want to, yeah, I don't know why you're being like that. But anyway, the last thing is communication policies. Two things happened, because I'm running to be the state rep in this area, everybody's calling me. I get dozens of phone calls, dozens of emails, dozens of messages. And so I'm going to share with you some of the things others have not already brought up. People were really upset about some of the things said by a certain person at the ribbon cuttings. And I was wondering if maybe in the future we need to review the speeches, get a copy of it before somebody goes up there and talks about how families who can't send their kids to private school are disadvantaged and talk to fifth graders about the, the school to prison pipeline. So I was wondering if maybe we need to be a little more careful about who gives speeches and what they say. It's very disheartening that he came to the schools.
Carrie, we're not going to get in the middle of your running against someone else.
No, this is a complaint about communications.
We're here for school, any concerns with the school, but we're not going to get into because you're running for a position you want to trash who you're running against. Or would I let him do that to you?
It's all right, it, it's a communication issue, you can phrase it any way you want. The other communication issue was on Friday night with the incident with the gun, I posed that the school district should have been more clear and explicit, explicit about the weapon because the kids, when they left, all had the rumors. It starts a rumor mill immediately. And Facebook jumped me, I mean, I got attacked on Facebook and I had to go crawl in a corner for a while till today. Almost everybody came back to me who yelled at me on Friday night, came back to me today and said, because of the message sent out today from Colrain, without giving information on what the threat was, they said, okay, now we get it. So just a thought to possibly, who, what, when, where, why, you know, I know, I got a degree in legal studies, I know what confidentiality, the type of gun is not confidential information, the fact that it was a gun is not confidential information.
Actually, I, I saw the news, I saw Channel nineteen, you know, I totally don't watch nineteen, but I actually thought the information even on Friday night, I was impressed with how the news handled it.
I thought you all did great.
Yeah.
I think the school did awesome.
I think Colrain Township Police Department was right on it without incident and I think it was handled very well.
I thought it was wonderful, I don't think you guys could have had a better response other than, I mean, the fact that that officer thought to not only grab that kid, but to try to round up the other kids, I thought was brilliant and showed him on the mark. And the, the student, that's incredible too. You guys get an A plus all the way on that, couldn't have wanted something better other than if you know it was a gun, tell us. Because all it does is get people to not trust the communications coming from you.
Wasn't the word used a weapon?
It was weapon. And people, if you go to your own website, there were sixteen people, I don't know if they're still there, sixteen different people on your website asked, what type of weapon was it? Was it a pocket, and I didn't comment at all, I made no comments, so it was not lead. They asked, was it a pocket knife or a gun? So my concerns to be specific aren't, aren't in the minority, but it's just a thought. I, I think you guys did really awesome. And who wrote that? Is he here? Whoever wrote it and got it out, awesome job getting it out so fast.
We actually have a team that works together on this stuff.
Okay, just a couple of suggestions, that's all, but otherwise, great.
And the biggest kudos goes to the student for reporting it. Thanks, Carrie. Okay, Liz, is it sure? Okay. A St. Ice parent and it's regarding bus transportation.
Hi, I, I won't speak very long, I kind of represent some of my neighbors, we're on bus route number thirty-five. I just want to thank Transportation, they've done a great job, bus drivers I've had, you know, great experience with. My concern, and I do want to say that what I'm going to say is not near as important as some of these issues that have been brought- as some of these issues that have been brought up. So as a parent, I'm going to speak for all of the students that they're representing, just like they are. That is absurd that we're having students cross front lanes in traffic. I am appalled at that. So I hope that that is taken care of tomorrow. So to my issue, I've kind of heard some hearsay and as we all know, that doesn't always work. But I will say that I've called the Transportation Office several times and either left voicemails or there hasn't even been the ability to leave a voicemail. So it's been, and that's in the past, last year when I've had to call and ask a question, I've gotten a response immediately. So I'm not sure what's going on, but I have not had the same response that I had as last year. So in speaking to my bus driver, I've heard that there were routes that five buses used to handle now have gone to three. So we certainly are making it more efficient, but I don't think that's ideal. My five-year-old son is now getting home at 4:30 from school and he gets out at 3:30. And he lives less than five minutes from the building. That is not efficient. Also, the route, if my children took the bus to school, luckily they don't, they would get picked up 30 minutes prior to when they would have gotten picked up last year. And then also they're getting dropped off 30 minutes later. So that's a complete hour. I mean, basically, if my kids, if my kids rode the bus in the morning and in the evening, which they do right in the evening, that would be a workday that you guys do. That's unacceptable in my mind. They should not be on a workday, a school day. So bus routes, I'm not sure what happened on bus 35, but we're getting way, it's taking an hour. So a friend of mine that lives on my street, so again, I'm speaking on behalf of some parents on my street. She has an app that she can find out where her kids are. The bus was picked up at St. Eyes at 4:03 today to bring her kids home. 4:03, it left St. Eyes and then it got to our street at about 4:30. I live five minutes away from St. Eyes, so something is...
Where does that bus go before it gets to your street?
I mean, you can answer that. I don't, I don't know your system, but...
And that was bus 35 again?
That was bus 35. Prior to that, last year and the year prior, actually two years ago when she started riding the bus, she got home at 4:00. Last year, she was getting home at 3:55. So it's about 3:50 to 4:00 was the prior two years. This year, we're now 30 to 40 minutes past. What? And she is eight, my son is five, so, all right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Jody Calardo? Calardo? Yeah, I have that right. Transportation and Safety.
Hello, everyone. This is all brand new to me, first time I've ever been to a board meeting. So pardon me if I'm not as graceful as everybody else. My transportation issues actually started before school. I called like a week before, never had a bus pass. Had a bus pass on Friday. Was told at that time that I, my kids had to cross, I'm on West Gower Road. My kids had to cross the street and get on across the street. To which, from Friday all the way till Monday, I couldn't leave a message at Transportation. Every time I called, it said, you know, this voicemail is full or blah, 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 whatever they've got on their voicemail. They were transferring somewhere else, which then that, nobody picked up there. I did end up leaving a message at one time. Nobody, until this day, nobody has ever called me back. My husband called Monday morning at about 10 till 7:00, spoke with the secretary. First of all, she is phenomenal. I love her. I gave her chocolates because she worked very well with me. Other than her, I don't have much respect for anybody in the department because I get rehearsed responses every time I have a question or what they have been told to say. I'm not really sure. I don't, I mean, my kids have been on the bus for four years now and this is the very first time I've ever had to call Transportation. I've ever had to go to Transportation, which I've been to Transportation Office now four times. Every Friday on my off day, I've been at Transportation Office. This year, yes. To which I've spoken with George, great guy, have no problems with him. He has been extremely accommodating to me, so I appreciate that. However, when I do talk to George, he never gets out of his seat. He is always looking at his computer and he's always giving me the answers that he told me last week. Which is fine, I'm just a parent, but I'm a concerned parent.
Don't ever say you're just a parent. It's the most important job in the whole world.
I agree with you there, but sometimes to them, I feel like I'm not being heard, which is very hard. I'm trying not to get emotional about. Sorry. So the first thing is, they were told they were answering emails. I have never received a response via email since the school started. I have never gotten a phone call back. And the only time that I've talked to somebody is when I went there. I had to drive myself to their office and talk to somebody. And if you're talking about kids' safety, that's ridiculous. I mean, their number one, their number one responsibility is to get my kids to school and to get them to school safely. Bus drivers, I commend you. As a matter of fact, I would love to ride the bus with any one of you and figure out where the problems are. But I don't know if that's an option. I don't know if it's an option for some of them to get out of their seats and actually get on the bus and figure out where the problems are. That's proactive in my opinion. And if you're going to be in charge of a place like that, I think that's what you need to do. You need to be in the trenches with your employees to figure out where the problems are. My, other than that, why were the bus drivers actually changed? Why were every route in the district changed? I've had the same bus driver for the past four years who has picked up my nieces next door to me. They are now juniors and freshmen in high school. She has had that route that entire time. Why were they changed? Ms. Pam, my former bus driver, comes to my house to see my kids because she loves them. And now my kids have no idea who their bus driver is. We've had six drivers since the first day of school. Why is that? Why? I was even told by George that the very first bus that my kids got on was not a, she was a temp. She wasn't even the bus driver of my kids' route. And now my kids are in their hands, in a temp hand, someone who doesn't even do that route all the time. It's kind of scary for a mother. Like I said, I appreciate George. He has worked with me. He has got me on a new route. I started on bus 69. The bus was full. They were sitting three and four wide on that bus from the first day of school. That, in my opinion, is extremely unsafe. I know the law states you can sit three wide. Have you been on a bus on a field trip when they're sitting three wide? They don't all stay in the seat. I have been on every field trip. I can tell you when they sit three wide, one is either half in the aisle or in the aisle. I've seen it. I think that is unsafe. I think that law needs to be changed, in my opinion. That's just my opinion. Now, after taking my kids off of a bus for a week because I knew it was completely unsafe for them and I felt I had to rearrange my schedule, my work schedule, to take my kids to and pick them up from school because nobody from Transportation would call me back and give me a straight answer, they are now on a bus that they get picked up on bus number two at my house, which I'm very thankful for because they wanted me to drive, walk down the street to the drug house that has four, three pit bulls that are not properly caged. And had they been on that route sometime, they would have seen that was not a safe place to let kids, a first grade and a fourth grade stand for the bus. They don't know that. They haven't never seen that. So now they get picked up, they're the very first stop and they drive from West Gower Road all the way to Ranlon, drive around White Oak School. This is what my child told me this morning when she got off the bus. Instead of turning around in a subdivision, she goes all the way to White Oak Middle School, drives around the school and then goes back and drops the kids off. I think it's just kind of ridiculous that they have to go completely out of their way to get a kid to school safely. And I don't, please, bus drivers, do not think that I am attacking you at all. You have to do what you have to do. You're jumping through hoops just like we are jumping through hoops. And not only that, but we are on two different buses. We're on one bus in the morning and a totally different bus in the afternoon. Do you know how confusing that is for a first grader? Or a kindergartner? I mean, I know they have, they put tape on their backpack. They have to do that for every kid because they can't tell you what bus they're on. Why is that? Because they're on, they don't know. One bus in the morning, oh, wait, no, that bus is too full, now we're on this bus. Oh, no, wait, that bus driver got rerouted, now we're on this bus. Why? Why is that? And I know you guys have been barbed in with transportation problems. I know I'm not, I'm probably just another mark on your little checklist and that's fine. But I wanted you to hear from a parent's point of view, how difficult it is, how emotional it is in my home, how I have to talk my nine-year-old off the ledge every time she comes home from school because she's gotten picked on on the bus because the kids don't like her. So, sorry. I just wish there was a simpler way to get our kids to school and back safely without them feeling like they're helpless. And so I just ask for your help in figuring this whole thing out. I know it's not going to be changed overnight. I'm not expecting that. But I just want to do to hear my heart and what my kids go through every day. So thank you for listening to me.
Thank you.
Jody, I'm going to have Chris McKee meet with you after the meeting, especially since you've never received a phone call back. So that we can work on this. Okay, and finally Denise Barley? Barley? Again, Transportation.
I won't go over everything that's already been said, but I agree with it all. There's great problems going on this year that have not gone on in the past. I think we all know that. What I'm here for is, I'm going to just make it very personal, a personal request that my two grandchildren do not get picked up at the top of the street at Boomer Road in Laurel Ridge. It's because of safety. It's a dangerous road, especially before and after school, lots of cars. There's a dip in the hill where the school bus, when the, okay, I have two grandchildren. One goes to the St. Ignatius that I take care of the buses for and the other one goes to Monfort Heights. We live within a mile to a mile and a half of both schools, okay? So there's two problems going on. One is safety and the other one is the long routes that they take. So I'm going to try and approach this maybe one child at a time. But the one that goes to Monfort High School is nine years old and we have to take her to the corner of Boomer Road and Laurel Ridge Lane. There are no sidewalks on Laurel Ridge Lane. So we have to stand in the street in front of a stop sign as the cars come up to go to work in the morning. They almost hit us. And then when we stand back to get out of their way, they tell us to move because we're blocking their view. It's just a dangerous place. And I have requested many times that somebody come and look at this situation because I think you can't realize how dangerous it is until you see the situation. On the way home from Monfort High School, they dropped my granddaughter off on the other side of the street of Boomer Road. And I really do cringe every day, hoping that she doesn't get hit by a car. There's a big dip in the road right in front of where the bus stops. The bus can't see if there's a car in the dip or not. When we drive, we can't see if there's a car or not. She puts her gate down. My nine-year-old is very good at looking and the bus driver goes, go now. And then she runs across the street. And I think an accident's going to happen and it's going to be my granddaughter, so I'm here to speak for her. I request that the bus comes down Laurel Ridge Lane as it has always done in the past. And the other thing is, is the routing situation. She has to get on the bus 50 minutes before school starts. We live a mile and a half from Monfort High School, okay? But she has to walk up to this dangerous place, get on the bus. And then I followed the bus one morning because I'm like, why is it taking them 50 minutes to get to Monfort High School? And they, the route that they take, it goes all the way out to White Oak, up Jessup Road, down, oh my God, it's all over the place. But anyway, what really I find amusing is they travel down the same section of Race Road three times. She gets on the bus on Boomer, they travel down Race Road, they pick up one child and then down half and then back up and then they go down Race Road again and then they go down half again and then they go through a subdivision and then a third time they go down the same part of Race Road. I don't understand why the routing can't be any better than that. I don't know who they're using for the routing here.
What bus number is it, ma'am?
This is bus number six. And so anyway, routing, and I beg you to have that bus come down Laurel Ridge Lane. I want to say that last year, at the very beginning of the year, I was on the phone with Dan Boland a dozen times. He knows me by name, not by person. And finally, he did cooperate and sent it down Laurel Ridge Lane. So when I got the school bus going, we're backed up at the corner again. Here I go again. Nobody returns your call from Northwest. You can't get an answer, so that's why I'm here now. I also want to say that when our street was developed, they made that cul-de-sac big enough for a bus to turn around on purpose. I know a bus can turn around on that cul-de-sac. And it would take about two minutes to come down our subdivision. I also want to say that this is the Monfort Heights bus that's not coming down our street. However, the White Oak bus Northwest also is coming down our street and turning around in the cul-de-sac. And now, as of this morning, so is the St. Ignatius bus. But we still don't have a Monfort Heights bus coming down. So that's what I'm here to plead for, to plead for that. I don't know what you're going to do about the routing. She's like doing her homework and just coping with it, but I think it's ridiculous. The routing is just ridiculous. So that takes care of one granddaughter. The other grandson goes to St. Ignatius School. We only live one mile from St. Ignatius School and I'm speaking for five neighbors when I speak on this. They're all like just driving their kids to and from school because they're like, we're not going to deal with this routing. This is ridiculous. The bus comes out, when school is dismissed, the bus comes out of St. Ignatius. It could be to our street in three quarters of a mile and instead it turns left and it goes all over. I don't know, I don't know, I didn't follow that bus yet, where it goes. It goes over Shreveatt and Eppworth and all this stuff. So anyway, they get out, the St. Ignatius students, and there's five of them on our street, they get out at 3:30 and they get home anywhere between quarter till 5:00 and 10:00 till 5:00 if they take the bus. The other parents are driving and just saying, forget it, but please Denise, go speak on this and let us know how you do. So I would like, and that bus would be bus number 35 for St. Ignatius. I would like to make a personal request that these two issues be reviewed. I thank you.
Thank you very much. I want to thank everybody for their comments, everybody for their patience. We've had a lot and that's why I did want to go ahead and let everybody speak instead of cut anybody off and stick to the time. We certainly, I think everybody up here, a couple of us are taking notes and we are definitely going to follow up on all this and get some solutions for this. So I apologize to the ones that had to take the time to come tonight, but certainly appreciate that you did. And with that, we're going to go on with the meeting. And at this time, we're going to move into certificated and licensed personnel.
Yes, the first item is certificated licensed personnel retirements and resignations. The superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the certified retirements and resignations as listed.
It's been moved in second. Are there any questions regarding the retirements and resignations? Chris? Motion pacified to zero.
Next item is classified personnel, classified retirements and resignations. Superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the classified retirements and resignations as listed.
Moved in second. Questions regarding classified retirements and resignations? Motion pacified to zero.
Next item is a fiscal item, fiscal year 19 permanent appropriations. Treasurer and superintendent recommend the Board of Education approve the permanent appropriations for fiscal year 2019 as listed.
Moved in second. Are there any questions regarding the permanent appropriations? Motion passed five to zero.
Next item is financial reports of the treasurer, July 2018. Next item is financial reports of the treasurer, July 2018. Treasurer and superintendent recommend the Board of Education approve the financial reports as listed.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any questions regarding the financial reports? Motion pass five to zero.
Next item is then and now certificates over $3,000. Superintendent and treasurer recommend the Board of Education authorize the payments of $3,000 requiring a then and now certificate as listed.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Questions regarding then and now certificates? Motion pass five to zero.
The next item is new funds. Treasurer and superintendent recommend the Board of Education approve the new funds as listed.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Questions, comments regarding new funds? Motion pass five to zero.
Next item is to accept and appropriate federal and state grants. The superintendent and treasurer recommend the Board of Education approve to accept and appropriate federal and state grants as listed.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Are there any questions or comments regarding our federal and state grants? I just want to say, a lot of time goes into applying and for these grants, and as you can see, hard work has paid off, there's quite a bit of money that we're receiving because of that, so thank you. Motion pass five to zero.
Board, before we move on, I'd like to make a recommendation, if okay with you, for the next board meeting, that when we get to fiscal items, that Amy reads these items at the board meeting and seeks approval, as all of them would be related back to her if there was questions about fiscal, if that would be okay with you guys.
That's fine, absolutely.
I've been taking notes which ones she should be doing next meeting, thank you.
Great. Next item is general business, donation to Northwest Local School District. McGraw Hill is donating 46 Chromebooks to the district in conjunction with our adoption of their online curriculum, ELA 6 through 10 study center. Superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the donation to the Northwest Local School District as listed.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second. I'd like to thank McGraw Hill for their generous donation of the 46 Chromebooks. Motion pass five to zero.
Next item is vendor contracts. The superintendent and treasurer recommend that the Board of Education approve the vendor contracts as listed.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Questions regarding vendor contracts? Motion pass five to zero.
Next item is certificated licensed personnel items. The superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the certificated licensed personnel items as listed.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Questions or comments? Motion pass five to zero.
Next item is classified personnel items. Superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the classified personnel items as listed.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Are there any questions regarding classified personnel items? Motion pass five to zero.
Next item is honor physics science course fee. Superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the revised high school fees as listed.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Are there questions regarding the honors physical science course fee? Motion pass five to zero. Okay, we'll go into superintendent's update.
All right, my update is quite lengthy, so I'll try to get through it. A lot of it has already been discussed. As we discussed, a lot of things were done wrong to start the school year in transportation, and we must do a better job and we will do a better job. Some quick fixes of some things we're trying to do. We had certain days, and most of this our fault because the routes were incorrect, or sometimes you can't help, people don't like bus stops, but there, that has been a major complaint also. There was days of 600 and 500 phone calls being received. The voicemail box was not large enough to take care of those. The other problem we found out is that when changes are being made in VersiTran, so you can change routes, or you can change bus stops, that only two people have that training, that being George, which is the name you've heard several times, and Barb. Dan was never trained in that. We have to get more people. So I have suggested several things, and Chris and I have talked, that starting August 1, that we hopefully work with some bus drivers and train them on how to use VersiTran. We pay them to come in prior to school starting so that we don't have Christina King, who's the secretary, some of you have referenced, answer the phone and then take a message and give it to somebody and nothing gets done with it. We want them to be able to answer the phone and make the change as it occurs. We have to drive our routes sooner and then we have to listen to our bus drivers. We have to meet with them and we have to talk about the routes. No, the system does not catch bus stops. And I, one of the issues was crossing four-lane highways. As soon as that bus driver brought that in, correct or incorrect, that was changed immediately. That's not something that's been ongoing. It was changed after she said, "You need to sign this." So that should not have occurred. We also will have bus passes going out a lot earlier next year. This is gonna take more manpower to do this, and then we should never have voicemail, where you can't leave a voicemail. Chris has tried to arrange a system with Cincinnati Bell where when you call, it'll tell you, "You are on the waiting list, you are caller number five, you are caller number six." They've also tried to specify a specific ring that comes in different, so when a school calls for a kid, that they can pick that up directly also. So we are working on this, there will be lots of changes, and trust me, you will see changes specifically before next year starts, and more importantly, in the immediate future with the concerns that you all have brought about bus stops and everything else. If you don't get a phone call tomorrow about them, please call me and I will make sure you get it changed. But we will change them. A lot of the complaints, we say, if you change one bus stop, then they're all gonna want their bus stop changed. We're in the business of customer service. If it needs to be changed, it needs to be changed. It's not if we do it, everybody's gonna start calling us. I don't buy into that, I don't agree with that. So those things will occur. We will make changes, we are about customer service, we are about our population of parents, students, community members, and employees. And after what we're listening to tonight, we need to have some major changes quickly because things are not working like they should, and nothing, we will not allow anything to jeopardize the safety of our kids. So all I can do is apologize for what has occurred and I will do my best to make sure it does not occur again. I have to read this next piece on NEOLA, it is required. It is about policy, so I would like to review the policies that identify our compliant officers. Ideally, we need two officers listed of different gender, giving name, title, address, direct phone number, and email, and it should not be assigned to myself. The following policies are the ones that need compliance officers, I need to read these to you, so I apologize. 1422, 1623, 1662, 2260, 2260.1, 3122, 3123, 3362, 4122, 4123, 4362, and 5517. I will give a complete copy of this to Chris so she can put it in the minutes if anybody wants it. It's just what we have to do through NEOLA. I am informing you tonight that our two compliance officers will be Daryl Yater and Dr. Chris Lynn Turney. So we have to do that now NEOLA is allowed to put them in our system, and we have to do it at a public meeting. Colrain High School Friday night football game. It was kinda scary. I know most of you have heard of it, but since we've had questions and comments, we had a Princeton student notice that a young man had a gun in his back pants, so he notified a Princeton administrator. They then immediately notified Jack, who gathered his team, and by the time they got to the Princeton sideline where he was sitting, he had moved over to the Colrain side. They identified him immediately. Police surrounded him and arrested him. Four people that were with him took off running. They were caught and questioned because we wanted to make sure they were not carrying any type of weapon. Today in school, and that was taken care of, and we put notification out, and thank you Colrain Township Police Department, Colrain High School Administration did a great job. And today, we had to send out that there was a threat in the school. Well, one of his friends got mad, flipped over a desk and said, "I'm gonna kill whoever talked about my NIGGA," and shouted that at the top of their voice. That young man was arrested, he was recommended for expulsion, he was charged with a felony two, and will be going to court. So that's why that went out today. The other incident we had that I wanted to talk about tonight was we had instructional lockdown at Colrain L and Colrain Middle School. We were notified Sunday that there was some domestic violence, and they didn't think it would affect the schools, that they want us to just keep an eye on the two little ones at Colrain L and a student at Colrain High School. It's all we were gonna do, gotta take care of it, make sure everything was good. When they went to go after this young man for the domestic violence, he took off running, never got near the school, never came on school property, outran the dogs, the police, and eventually got the helicopter up. And so for the rest of the week, we're gonna have one of our resource officers from Colrain High School at Colrain Elementary, just to be safe, cover things and go through there. Board, also be informed that tomorrow night, we have found one of our three resource officers that we wanted for the three middle schools. They will be hired through Colrain Township. If it goes through board approval tomorrow night, we hope to put that officer at Colrain Middle starting sometime next week. We are still looking for two others, so we can put one at Pleasant Run Middle next and then White Middle after that. And they will be full-time officers hired by Colrain Township Police Department. So those were two unfortunate incidents. Instructional lockdown, in case you're not aware, school goes on like it does, they go to the bathroom, they go to lunch, they go in and out, we don't allow people in and out of the building in terms of kids. Luckily, we no longer have the trailers at Colrain L, so they don't have to go outside for anything. Their recess is inside, the kids aren't happy, especially with all this rain they've had, but it is what it is. Tomorrow, we'll check, we always check with the police first. What is your call? What do you think is safe? What do you recommend we do? If they think we can go out for recess tomorrow, then that's what we'll do. Dustin has been in touch with them 24/7, he had, they have his cell number, he has their cell number, they also have mine. But that incident was no immediate danger of any or safety issues with our kids, everything was fine. We were afraid that sending out the Colrain High School information would get tied into the Colrain and Colrain Middle, so tonight I wanted to clarify that it was nowhere related to either one. I notified the board every time, they know, if any of you hear something and you have questions, feel free to call me at any time or email me, I've always had my phone out and I'll respond. I had one parent, we went back and forth with five emails in about five minutes, and she was shocked that I responded. And I said, "I'll respond to anybody if you send me an email." The best way is to call me, but if you have questions, feel free to ask. Wednesday night's Board of Education work session, topics that we'll cover there, changing ESP. This is ESP, Electronic School Board. It will be different a little bit, how they log on to the computer. I have six videos, we have to show them, they last about seven minutes total, all six together, so we have to go over that. We have sexual harassment and bullying in the workplace, and that is required by all employees, so we are doing it for the board, just like we do for other employees. Board member communication with each other constitutes an official meeting, the sunshine law. They know the law, it's just to revisit it, and it's to let you know they are allowed to sit at a football game, and all five of them can sit together and watch the game. You can't talk about official business when you're doing it. So that's nothing anybody's violating, that's just something we have to cover. And then the last thing is, we're gonna start our five-year strategic plan and we'll be asking for volunteers to help with that. So that's our agenda for Wednesday night, starts at 6 o'clock, we will not vote on anything, we will not pass anything, that's all it is, it'll be right here. We will not be moving into executive session for that night. On October 8th, Board of Education will move this meeting to Butler Tech. We had some calls questioning why. We have done this every year for the past year, three years, so that folks who come to the meeting and board members can go on other campuses where our kids attend on a regular basis, they are part of our school. We lose a lot of funding because they go to Butler Tech. It is a very important piece of our education, it supplies our classrooms, it is graduating kids with college credits, it is graduating kids with skills and trades. It is like if you attend Northwest or Colrain High School and now our middle schools, you've taken a Butler Tech class, that's just the way it is. So we moved them there, if you guys would like to change that, I'd be more than happy to, but this was per your request and why we moved it, and it's worked out well each time.
I think it's important, we're talking one meeting a year, and it gives the opportunity for people, believe it or not, people really do watch on TV, and so if they get to see, we try to each year do it at a different campus with Butler Tech. So it's not like we're trying to make it harder for any of the regulars that come here, we just want the opportunity for, to showcase the different opportunities at Butler Tech because so many of our kids are involved in it.
And it's a good way to expose them to the facilities, you know, it's a, and I'm the Butler Tech org rep, so I have to go to their board meetings also, and it's just, we got a lot of good things going on at Butler Tech, and I think your kids would be impressed with it, and I think you guys would too, coming to see the facilities.
And to be honest, it's, it might be the only time any of the other board members get to see any of that as well, and I think it's important, if we sit on this board, that we're familiar, at least with what campuses our, our students, you know, have the opportunity to go to. So it's kind of a win all the way around for the board, for the community, for the staff at Butler Tech.
And that board meeting is at the, you guys, LaSwordsville Lake where it was on Route 4, that's where the, where the, our next board meeting on October 8th will be held.
I believe Chris has put the address on the website also.
Yeah.
We will also need to change the board meeting for November 12th, when we had our planning meeting in January, they had not yet set up date for Capitol Conference. It is during the 12th, so we can move that to the 5th or 19th. So I'm asking for your wishes, on which date would be better, the 5th or 19th?
We're spoke Mondays.
Yes, they are. I can change it to a Tuesday, Wednesday, if you guys think that would be better.
It doesn't matter to me, neither dates, it doesn't make any difference to me. Probably the 5th would be better for me because my son's getting married on, later in November.
Good point. So November 5th, and I'll have Donna send out a reminder and then we'll post it and change it.
So just an FYI, we'll have meetings back to back, the 29th of October and then the 5th of November, which is fine.
The 19th gets into that week of closer to Thanksgiving, so it might not be well-attended anyway.
Exactly.
All right, lastly, I am starting two committees. One is the Superintendent Advisory Committee. I've sent emails out to about five or six folks, I have sent out hundreds of emails to very important people, our VIP committee. One of the things we heard through the communication audit, and we will be having a public session reporting out from the communication audit mid-October, and it will be at Houston Elementary, we'll get the dates out to you. They will also do a board presentation on October 29th. So one of the things that came out is people felt like, "You contact us, you bring us in, and we work for levies and we pass them, and then we never hear from you again." That's a problem. We need to collaborate with our stakeholders, we need to get them involved, we need to gather your input, and we want to do a better job of doing that. The Superintendent Advisory Committee is going to be a very special committee that could really delve into finances of a school district, how it works, financial decisions, curriculum, it will also delve into how do we do better communication as we move forward? And like I said, I've contacted five or six, trying to keep it even on each side of the district. Obviously, since our district is two-thirds to one-third though, there will be double the participants from the Colrain side that there is the Northwest side. I'm also currently meeting with all PTAs. I have one set up with PRE, Northwest High School coming up in the future in Struble. Those meetings are going very well. I have set through several meetings like this, the bulk of the conversation is all And same things I'm hearing tonight are the same things I've heard there. So I am taking that also and telling folks that we will do better, and we will, but it also is a time to answer questions or for parents to ask anything they would want on why certain things are going. At one school, we found out they weren't very appreciative of their mulch and they're set up outside and flowers and bushes, so we're working on that, but if I hadn't attended that meeting, we wouldn't have heard more. And then I hear Monica tonight, "We need the same thing at PRE," so Monica will be in touch, we'll do the same thing there. The new schools give us a little bit because we're waiting for grass to grow and the rain to quit growing, or the rain to quit causing the grass to grow. Lastly, I met with our union reps today, 34 for certified teachers, had good conversations with them, how to get them more involved, keep them better informed. They have asked that I come to each faculty meeting and talk about the state of the district and ask questions to get more involved. I want to be more approachable, I want to be somebody who's not intimidating, I want to make sure, and I told them today, I said, "I sit down, I'm 6'5", 300, I'm big, I'm overweight, my knees hurt, I need to sit anyway, I don't want to stand up and make people think they can't communicate." Very receptive, great meeting. They have lots of ideals that they don't feel like they've been able to share. And then my next step is to get with the classified. I think bus drivers, we're gonna do you by yourselves because it's you- I think bus drivers, we're gonna do you by yourselves, because it's unique to your circumstance, but I will be setting up meetings to come and listen to your concerns on a monthly basis, and then I'm also doing it with the classified employees in the building. We want to collaborate. We want to work to do a better job. We want to empower people to speak their minds. We want people to enjoy coming to work, and we need to do a better job. If I'm seen as not approachable, I have to change that 100%, and I will change that. We are a customer service driven by safety of kids, educating kids, and making sure that we work as teams, and I will change that, and we will change that as a district as we move forward. So if you did not get an invite, and you would like to be on any of those teams, I would gladly meet with you and put you on them. Trying to set up some dates with some folks right now. Lastly, I'm willing to come to anything and everything. We're going to Pleasant Run Farms on the 18th to talk about the new buildings. I am looking for insight and ideals, and I've already talked to a couple of Beavis residents, but we are looking at putting two housing projects on the Welch site and the Beavis site. Thirty-four homes on the Welch site and 30 on the Beavis site, with the price running from $250,000 to $320,000. It is a great possibility for our district. We've met with the board. We've showed them the pictures. We are going to get a great price for the property at each, which I cannot discuss, because we're in negotiations right now, but if it's little community, things like that, that you need me to be at, because you're hearing things, you're seeing things, please invite me. If I can't attend, then somebody who can get you the answers will attend. We want to do a better job communicating. We want to be a better person to collaborate with, and more importantly, make everybody feel like their input is important, and that we are listening. Wanted to make you aware of this committee, so that's all I have after that.
Okay, thanks, Todd. Okay, this is the time. A lot's been said tonight. If there's anybody that has any questions regarding what was talked about tonight only, you can just, you don't even have to come up front. You can just ask from right there. Okay?
I just want to say thank you for all the work you've done. I know that you guys were struggling, you know, a little bit tonight, so I just want to say thank you for all you do. And Mr. Bowling, I want to say thank you for coming on behalf of Pleasant Run PRF. Yes, thank you for coming to our meeting on the 18th, and we're having, not a housing project, not a housing project, but a community project.
Housing development. I'm just excited to show you the pictures of the houses, because they are phenomenal. I, thank you. Semantics is important.
And I know, real quick, I'm not sure if that picked up on the thing, but basically, you were thanking Todd, and I just kinda went, yeah, because I've had some people say that when they're home, they can't hear people from the audience. Yes.
Hi, I, um, please, but I also had a bus concern where my grandson, so I'm a grandparent that is concerned about where my grandson, or my granddaughter is being picked up. It's route change. I had a grandson who was being picked up at Sovereign and Regal in cul-de-sac, and that was for like five, six, seven, eight years. Now, this year, they're putting these kids up on Sovereign and Regal, four-lane highway. Nobody stops at stop signs. They don't even look at them. And these kids, these elementary school kids on this corner, and I'm thinking it's gonna be gridlocked up on that corner, that section, in wintertime, because you've got to have cars up there with kids to keep them out of the cold. So, because when they were in the cul-de-sac, it was much easier. There was a place for everybody to be at. I don't know if the neighbors around there were complaining, but there were parents out there with the kids.
Sure.
So, you know, I just think that changed. I didn't understand why it happened, but that change that they have now with the kids are being picked up is very dangerous.
What bus number, what bus route? Do you know?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four. Twenty-four.
I did not make, I did not make the bus stop. I drive the bus, I did not make the bus stop.
I never thought that. I wasn't upset with you, honey.
I know you did. I was a loud mouth.
That was, that was great from the back.
So to clarify then, just to make sure I got your information right, used to be turnaround was in a cul-de-sac at Sovereign and Regal. Now it's up at the top instead.
Right in the corner.
Okay. And it's bus number 24. Okay.
Thank you. Yes.
What is the plan to expand the parking at Pleasant Run Elementary?
I can address some of that. So I was just gonna call Monica, but since you've asked about something she brought up. We never should have had Pleasant Run Middle School and Pleasant Run Elementary open house on the same night. That was a huge mistake the district made. Should not have been allowed. Principals should not have asked for that to occur. They both have realized it was a mistake. I will do a closer job monitoring the calendar to make sure those things don't happen. Secondly, when we built the schools, we talked to the elementary principals to make sure that we knew you could not have all school assemblies. You never can. They're too big. They don't do it in other districts. We knew that from doing our research prior. We knew that we were gonna have to do grade-level things to get things working. So if you had second-grade course, it would be a second-grade assembly only, and the principals would have more nights out. PTA functions, depending on your attendance, if we don't have something with PRMS, I think we can do things at PRA, because there are some things that can be done. We have talked about that exit ramp down to Hamilton Avenue. We will continue to talk about that. We just got feedback from Kleininger's. I haven't had a chance to read the email, but they have made recommendations. And then that parking lot has lines everywhere, so I'm in full agreement with Monica. We try to keep that door shut, or that gate shut, and then when buses are done, and they're done, and that gate opens, and so there's pickup. A keypad on that door is what we have already in place at Monford Heights. It is something we can do there. Also, we ran into a little bit of trouble like that, though, because people started sharing the code. So you had to be careful of who was getting the code and who was coming in. But there is no reason you should have to sit there and knock on a door. So maybe a buzzer system might be better, or something like that, so they know somebody's there. But we'll definitely investigate that, because that's a good point. We can look at additional parking. We also are looking at putting a full-size football soccer field there, and then two baseball fields down in that lower level. So we want to make sure that the community has places to play sports also, because we feel that's important.
I just said for, on Pleasant Run Middle, there's already like a practice football area on that.
Right. We eventually want another field down at the bottom, and so maybe we could look at that field and what possibly we could do over there when they get to move back. It's gonna take a year or so to grow grass, but we don't like them up there by Pippin Road anyway. Plus, it's a downhill surface, if you've noticed. If we can get a true football field, there'll be less holes, less crevets. It'll be safer for the kids to go on.
There are two elevations at Pleasant Run Elementary, so one elevation is the football field, and one elevation is the...
That was the plan, Chris, unless you know different, but I'm pretty sure. That hill was like this, and then went like this, so people could sit there and then see what's going on there. So we were worried about the elderly making it all the way down there to get close to something, so they were gonna stay up top, and then a seating area there, and then the field down there.
Is there a fund line for that?
It depends on funds. Right now, we won't start any seating, because it's so late in the fall, but as soon as the spring hits, we can start looking at that. I don't see how we'll be able to add any additional parking this year, no. But we will definitely look at it because of your concerns, and see if we can't do a better job with what we got. But I think we can avoid some of it. We knew we couldn't do all school assemblies, open houses, and we knew we couldn't have Pleasant Run and Pleasant Run L, and they thought a half an hour difference. Well, I know, I saw cars get towed out who were stuck in the mud. Eric's first thing is, said, "This is ridiculous. We never should have done this." We gotta make sure it just isn't even an option from here on out.
This time we'll go to board member comments. Joe?
I just want to thank the transportation people, the bus drivers, and the concerned parents. Hopefully, the communications will be a lot better. If you have concerns with the transportation people, when you call, I know there's frustration and angst because of the safety of your, your children or grandchildren, and hopefully that will be rectified. And thank you again, guys.
Ma'am, I wanted to address your comment that I didn't know what was going on. I answered the question that Tracy asked me, was I made aware as a board member to what was going on in transportation? And I, I said, "No, I was not made aware of the changes that they were gonna make in transportation." But as far as knowing what's going on in transportation, probably know as much as anybody in this room is what's going on in transportation right now. And it was not approved by this board. There's been things that have, I've heard that they, people have been told that they have policy. The board members make policy, not departments. So we have a lot of issues that we have to clear up. I just want you to know that on more than one occasion, I have volunteered, this is my own time, just like our crossing guard, to come and help, and have never once been asked, other than when I was on the committee that redistrict this district. And I've done redistricting numerous times across the 18 years that I was the transportation supervisor. I knew what it was gonna be. That's why I volunteered. It's very hard when you have a redistricting year to make everything click on the first day. And did I? No. Always little glitches, but nothing to this magnitude, as the bus drivers will tell you. But we'll get it straightened out somehow, but there's a lot, there's a lot of issues where there's a lot of safety concerns that need to be addressed. And I thank you for coming, and everybody who addressed the transportation tonight. Thanks.
And it's sad that you volunteered like that, and you're knocking down the clock. I commend you for volunteering to do that, and I think it's strength that you, as a board member, volunteered, and it's sad whoever is personally responsible, they take it up on your expertise, because look what the results was.
Okay, Mark?
I want to thank the grandmas for coming out and looking out for the grandkids. That's awesome. This has just been overwhelming. I mean, it's overwhelming. We had a lot going on this opening. I think there's a lot of lessons to be learned. We've not created a school environment where we've doubled our, our students in one building. It was, I think it's a situation, I'm not trying to make excuses, but I think it's, we don't know what we didn't know. I'm glad to see the community come out. We need to hear your voice. We're certainly, I don't feel like we were beat up. We need to hear what is being, what's going on. Your children are the most prized possession we have, and we want that to come off that way. So we don't know what we don't know, again. So when you come out and inform us, that's great. So thank you.
Jeff?
Yeah, I just want to obviously thank everybody, Transportation Department coming in, telling us the problems that there are, and the parents coming in and expressing their concerns. And then I want to thank the, at Colrain High School for the quick response from the Township Police and the administration, and how quickly they handled this. And, you know, this is something, obviously, as everybody knows in the news, this can get out of hand very quickly. And I really appreciate how quick they jumped on top of this.
One thing I wanted to clarify, too, the four students that the, that was referred to that Colrain Township Police went after and searched them, they were, they didn't have any weapons on them, so that, that was very good news. And the one that did, obviously, was arrested. So yes, they definitely, as I said before, the, I just want to, I can't say enough how much to commend that high school student for speaking up, and that's something we need to continue to have those conversations around our children, our grandchildren, so that the kids aren't afraid to speak up, because that person that spoke up, I mean, who knows what, what that could have prevented? I mean, we don't know if that student, what their intentions were or were not, but the fact that we had a student that wasn't afraid to do the right thing immediately, it certainly made all the difference in the world. And as always, especially after what happened downtown, we can't thank our police officers enough for doing what they do every single day. For the woman that volunteers as the crossing guard, I just want to thank you again. It's unbelievable that our own parents almost run over you. Unacceptable, and we will work with Colrain Township so that we get an officer there to, you know, try to get that stopped immediately. On another note, I would just like to send our thoughts and prayers to CPS for the loss of a student today, Gabriella Rodriguez, 15 years old, who was hit running after a bus, and that driver, at least as of before this meeting started, they still haven't found the driver. So definitely our condolences to the family and to every member of the high school and the whole school district, because, you know, that's a tragic loss, and we certainly are gonna do everything we can so that we never have to experience that. So again, thanking all of you for coming, and I tell you what, it, it's, this is what it should be, is people sitting out in those seats. I can't tell you how many meetings you sit here and you're talking to a couple administrators. This is good to see the community and see staff members that are here and feeling free and open to voice their frustrations, voice things they, that, positive things, negative things. That's the only way things are gonna get better, if it's an open communication. So I want to, I want to thank all of you for being here. Everybody get home safely. We are going to move into an executive session. You're more than welcome to stay. I will tell you, we are, all we're gonna do when we come back out of executive session is adjourn the meeting, so there won't be any other action taken, but just wanted to let you know ahead of time. So Todd, do you want to call for the executive session?
Superintendent recommends that the Board of Education move into executive session.
So moved.
Second.